Don't create an event, that's what. Just go like, my count it. Are you, are you monitoring comments when you post them?
Pushing.
Do you, do you know any of these?
Yes. No le digas, no le digas, no le digas, no le digas.
At seven o'clock, call and order the regular meeting here of the city council here of Aransas Pass, 600 West Cleveland Boulevard on December 15th, 2014 at 7:00 PM. Everybody please rise for the invocation, appreciate it. Lord, I'd like to give thanks for this beautiful day and also the opportunity that you blessed us with to be able to walk on earth right now. Give thanks for all the small things that you do for us, for the blessings of family, friends, and the community that we're allowed to serve. Please show us the guidance to do what's right for our community so we'll help it grow. Let us be fair and equal to all our decisions that we make. Also bless our children, they're our future that's coming up. And also give thanks to all the, all the people that are right now dealing with illness and stuff, hope that they all get better. Also give you special thanks for this special time of the season to show your love and gratitude that you bestowed upon us and watch over us, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to bring us to item number three, the consent agenda. All the following items of the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. Will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member's sole request. The discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items A and B, both ordinances.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Hold on, favor say aye.
Aye.
We're going to change it up a little bit. We're going to go ahead and do the year review before we move on to our citizen comments. That way if anybody has something they want to bring up, they will have the opportunity to bring it up then. Sylvia.
Thank you, mayor and council community. It has been a very, very full 2014. We hit the ground running and never stopped, and I'm still trying to catch my breath. So this is just a small snapshot, it's a small vignette of everything we've been working on this year. It does by no means touch the absolute depths of which we work every day. So it's been a year of tremendous change and it's only getting started. There's absolutely tremendous growth going on around us and we're trying to not only catch up but prepare for those incoming labor forces. We recently had our attorney general ruling, our annexation expected to double our footprint in the next three to four years. That is astronomical demands on public works, on fire, police, safety, all of our inter-local contracts. The design for 2725 is finally complete. The design for 1069 expansion and water line also complete. If you recall, in 2013, we saved some money. We've added some money to the 1069 expansion plans to make that turn down Highland, bring our water and sewer supply down. The Matlock Water Line has also been completed. We added additional hydrants on the north side. The design contract that you guys just approved a few weeks ago, Phase 1 for Highland and Johnson is out for design. Phase 2 Beasley and Rhodes soon to follow shortly after that. Johnny and his group are here, they know we need to shovel in the ground by March and, and we haven't backed off on that date. We have some subdivisions that are coming that are reliant on those lines being in. We did also approve the contract to get fiber optic to Public Works. And if you didn't know, I'm officing out of Public Works a couple of days a week now and they need the help, they need the accessibility. Finance, obviously this is a crown jewel. Our bond rating improved to A double minus, which is up. That translated into a lower interest rate for our last bond sale. 1.89, which is better than anybody anticipated and those were a short-term sale. They were financed seven years for heavy equipment. No more are we doing 20 years for equipment that outlives its useful life. We did not increase taxes this year. We did increase a pass-through water sewer rate increase from our water district. We do have a new fee for EMS and drainage. We ended the year, or expecting to end the year with the $375,000 surplus, which is also a first for Aransas Pass. New auditor and a new finance director officially took the reins in 2014. Beautification, we worked on creating the building standards board. We approved the landscaping ordinance, the lighting codes. We've had two community cleanups. This is a structure on Harrison. That was a picture of the structure before and that's our staff getting started on that demolition. The harbor, you guys approved a 1.2 million cleanup and it is well underway. Green Willie's in the audience or in the back office somewhere. Our environmental programs continue. We've got a lot of cleanup to go still on the harbor, but we're moving fast with TCQ and have made good friendships and partnerships. Our $235,000 bulkhead repair is well underway. Pat's in the audience, that's also out for bid. If it wasn't out for bid Friday, it's out for bid today. Community involvement, we are going to litigation for Harbor Park. You guys approved that in the last session and that lawsuit was filed last week. Diamond Marine is our newest tenant. It will bring a lot of business to our local HEB and great asset for our sales tax revenue. 2012 building codes were approved this year. Ben, Michael and staff have been hard at enforcing the codes. We removed mobile homes from the single-family zoning, which is probably one of the most strategic moves in order to get our property values back up where they need to be in our residential neighborhoods. With the help of the chief, our camping ordinance was modified and we are working with our county courts on ETJ regulation and you will have an item in front of you today. Quality of life, this was a big one on the survey. We had a library revamp, a new librarian who's been an absolute wonderful asset to the city. Redoing Veterans Memorial, renaming, shovel in the ground, that's a nice picture there. And if you've not been, we're almost done waiting for the flagpoles to come in and the final monuments. And then the community park is also done. If you've not been to community park, please go take a look. The, the swing sets are going up tremendously fast. That brings us to community involvement. We had a big 4th of July celebration that was an absolute hit with the community. We had a Thanksgiving feast, that was a story straight out of the Bible. We planned to serve 200, 250, and we served over 500 people and still had enough food to send to Metro Ministries for the homeless. We did have some money left over and we were planning a children's Christmas event in the next week with, in conjunction with the school district. Tourism, you awarded $20,000 to Rock the Dock, $7,500 to Wounded Warrior, and $4,500 to Rudy's Red Fish. Our shrimpery this year had record crowds with over 60,000 in attendance. Contracts, this is always a fun one. Limbarger contract was renewed with the slated stipulation they'd be more aggressive on our past due amounts, whether it's taxes or municipal debt owed. The Republic contract was renewed at a cost saving of over $125,000 to the city and we have translated that into community cleanup dumpsters. We will be having another community cleanup the Saturday after Christmas, December 27th. Two engineering contracts approved, LNV and RVE both approved. Tri-County EMS service approved, the Little League contract approved, and Mr. Penya's softball contract approved. The MPA students did the review of the aquatic center, gave us some great recommendations. Our emergency ops plan was polished up, submitted to the state. Not exactly where we wanted, but we're getting there. Our water conservation plan was also updated and approved and we had our first ever citizens academy. Police, improved technology, they're almost self-sufficient in their IT department. They've had some great investigation successes. We've had modernization of our 911 system and our training hours have gone up dramatically from 451 when Eric arrived to over 3,600. And our gang unit continues to have great successes. Civic Center, record revenues, they met their year projections in the first quarter of 2014. Fire department has a new truck on order, they've improved their scheduling and our volunteer fire department, our volunteer fire corps is also up to three volunteers and we're hoping to expand that. I think with new shiny equipment, we might attract some more people. And the list goes on and that was just a small, small amount of what we have done in 2014 and it really, really is made possible by a good council and the staff and great community support. So thank you.
Thank you Sylvia.
Thank you.
That takes care of our year review. Right now I'm going to open the item number four, our citizen comments. Please stick your full name and your address, please. The floor's not open. Yes ma'am. Or sir.
Hi, my name is Jeff Berger. I'm over here at Iron Gator, Lot 107 in Aransas Pass. And I have a question on the water bill. I see that you have ambulance and I would like to have an explanation of what ambulance is all about.
Sylvia.
We do have a third-party contract with Tri-County Services. We do not run our own ambulance service and that is a fee to help offset emergency transportation too.
But I understand that our medical pays for ambulance no matter what. So why are we getting charged for that again?
That's a bill between your insurance and the ambulance company. EMS fees and those type of fees are very typical among municipalities and it is a way to offset the contract cost spread throughout the community.
Okay, shouldn't you have EMS on here rather than ambulance?
We can call it, we can call it EMS if, if.
Well, I mean it would make a better explanation in my book. I don't know about anybody else. But that was my concern.
The first one to bring it up, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's medical, you know, when I, and I have, my medical insurance pays for ambulance, so why am I paying for ambulance again? That's the question. Thank you.
All right, thank you sir.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Ma'am?
Okay, Pauline Murkovich, y'all know I come when it's important. And tonight I want y'all all to know that I appreciate our police department and the more I sit and watch what's going on all over the rest of the USA, I think we're doing a good job here. But I'm just one person, but I think that they're great guys, okay? I'm not going to give a long speech, it's all on this little card. One thing is that us seniors like our computers. We're not into Facebook or Twitter or any of that and so we can't get some of the stuff on the computer and that other stuff. One of them is that some of my friends have said we would like to have the accidents listed on the blotter and we do look at the police stuff and we look at the city council. I've already brought that up today and I won't go into details on that. But the main thing tonight, and I brought Nicky along because he's always lecturing to me and I thought maybe you know that this is serious. We think that we have a potential problem here in Aransas and it's down here on Avenue A and Wheeler. And Nicky doesn't want to come back on the short line when we go somewhere because he's afraid it's too dangerous down there by churches. I think you're all aware of that little corner. And I know it's a potential problem and a lot of my friends are now wanting to go back behind the hospital rather than get in that corner. And those people over at those Palms Apartments, they're getting a little scared in there by churches. It's very, very dangerous, maybe not for y'all, but I know it's dangerous and we have a potential problem. And now the most important thing is I think we need to really look at Wheeler. I don't want anything to change on that, go faster or anything. It's all I could do to adjust to the heavy traffic going over to Corpus. I like our speed limits low on Wheeler and especially, I don't know if you ever looked, but a lot of times I see them coming in from Rockport like City Hall. Those people are driving fast and I know that there was a terrible wreck a few years back. You may remember it. I don't think we need to raise our speed limits, but I think that does need to be looked at and maybe more. That's it, short notice.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you Pauline.
Now I know Eric, you were talking about that accident with the school bus and stuff.
Pauline and I did talk as far as the social media deal. She wanted, a lot of people wanted information on that fatal accident.
Right.
But I could not release the information while the child's life was in the.
Right.
So we were stuck on that. But the accidents do show up on the blotter. They are listed, itemized as a major or minor crash. I'm trying to work at getting it more seamless across all of the platforms so that that way you can go to one place and you can see what's on all of our services. I am working on that actively. The, we talked about the intersection, we have a meeting with text box this week, Wednesday afternoon. We're going to be bringing up the two child fatalities that happened in the same exact location within the last two years. We're also going to be discussing the speed for the third time with them and some other traffic concerns. So we appreciate you coming, if you need it and.
And I do appreciate that Sunday.
Yes.
The school was involved.
Right.
Okay, okay, make them sure of that, okay.
Sunday when I was at church, I saw one officer sitting there at the corner and he actually pulled somebody over as I was walking in, which I was very grateful because that car was flying real fast. So I do know y'all are sometimes not seen, but you are being heard, you know, keep up the good work. You may think, you know, a lot of people, I don't want to get pulled over by the PD and this and that. Well, if you weren't speeding, you wouldn't get pulled over. So I mean it's a just cause. You know, that's a thankless job, a lot of guys get the wrong information, you know, they were picking on me or this and that, but there's a reason for that cause. So I do say thank you again.
Appreciate their hard work.
Yes. Is there anybody else that wants to say anything? Mr. Chaney?
Good afternoon. My name is Jack Chaney, I'm Aransas County Commissioner, Precinct 101A and I am so honored to have part of Aransas Pass in my precinct. I really, it's, Rockport sometimes forget that there's people that live south of them, but I don't. I want to just take a moment, I really enjoyed your, your presentation. I think that was excellent. I've been watching Aransas Pass for a long, long time and I've known Vicky and I've known Phillip for a long, long time. I've known Billy and, and Alan for a while and, you know, just, we, we've just seen Aransas Pass right on the verge, right on the verge of, of doing something that's magnificent. Well, we're there now. Y'all are at a time in the life of Aransas Pass that you may never see again. You have so much stuff that's coming in, you know, communities want to do things to keep their children local, okay? The primary thing that you do to keep your children local is to get jobs. Well folks, those are coming. Those jobs are coming. We're going to be able to allow our children to stay in the area and make a good living to where they can provide for their families and, and everything. And that, to a great degree, is because of y'all. I mean, it really is. Mayor Chopp and I were talking earlier, I've been in politics a long time. I've either been an appointed official or an elected official for about 30 years. And the health of a community lies with its city council. You're, you have an excellent city manager, you have a, an excellent police chief. They're striving for excellence beyond what's expected and that is something that the community sometimes doesn't realize. But this community right now is on the verge of greatness. I mean, you absolutely have, in the next 18 months, the 36 months, you will have an opportunity to change the look of Aransas Pass and this entire end of, of Aransas County, as far as I'm concerned. You're going to have an opportunity to change what that looks like into. You're going to have an opportunity to change what that looks like into, into the next 50 years. I applaud you for your forethinking. I applaud you more than anything for the fact that you're working together as a unit. You are of common mind, you're for the best interest of Aransas Pass, and I compliment you for that, and I compliment you on an excellent year. If I can ever do anything for you, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Cunnings.
Thank you, Derek.
I'm Chris from Crystal Marine. Can you explain to me, I just want to see on the slideshow y'all had, showed giving Rudy's Red Fish money. And I was understanding that y'all didn't give him anything this year. I fit the bill for that, all the tournaments that were there, Crystal Marine did, Phillip helped out a little bit, and so did you and the bakery. And I actually fitted the bill for that whole thing, and I don't want to be able to think I was double whammy because I understood because of the fires, y'all couldn't help them out.
Let's check.
The emails are CC'd to me, too.
Let's check. I have a spreadsheet.
Along with what everybody else is saying about y'all, y'all are doing an excellent job, especially the chief.
Chris, I'll have to get you...
If you could just check on it, because like I said, I don't want to be double whammy here for something y'all actually did pay for and they didn't tell me.
Rudy's Red Fish was, Rudy's Red Fish was approved May the 5th of 2014, along with the Wounded Warrior, so we'll check disbursement of that.
Yeah, because I know in 2013, y'all helped them, but in 2014, they said due to that fire, that y'all didn't have the money to do it. And that's when I stepped the board and got it done, because I wanted them here for sure.
We'll check on that.
If you could, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
My name is Ernie Torres, and I live at 759 South McCambell. But I'm not talking about McCambell, I'm talking about North and South Commercial, 10 blocks both ways, and North and South Houston. I've traveled those slowly so I could see, most of them have curbs and have properties that are overgrown. If it's not the property's responsibility, of course, some of them don't want to cut where the city's supposed to be cutting, and the city states it pertains to the owner, but somebody needs to take responsibility for their property. If not, the city needs to take responsibility and charge the owner for doing whatever they need to be doing. And it's just a big mess. Some of those house yards are just overgrown. It's right on, especially one on Commercial. You go 10 blocks either way, on both sides, you have too much debris, too much trash during the weekend, and not being picked up, you know? There's a lot of regulations. I know when they get permits, when they put buildings up, they have to, businesses have to know what their responsibilities are. It's not being checked or something not going right because, you know, they're getting away, they're putting up 5, 10 cars, they're going up to 20 cars, and it looks like a junkyard on the main drag of our town, you know? And I like to see the responsibility be fulfilled, you know, for the people. We're still going to clean up Aransas Pass, I've heard that for a long time, a long time. And, but, I like to see it. It's coming to fruition, and I thank God for the council that we have, I thank God for all the people that are working together. We finally got something going, and I, you know, you feel great. And so, I just wanted, I just wanted to bring this up, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to say anything?
Just a couple comments on what some of them said. My name's Steve Warren, 617 North Houston. I noticed in some of the newspapers, local newspapers and other newspapers for Chief Lancher, that they do like a police blotter in there, like 911 calls and stuff, and I thought maybe that might be an avenue that you could take with the Aransas progress.
Brittany is here tonight, and there are some news agencies that do repeat that, but we have some things that we've been discussing in the works for the coming year.
Yeah, because I get the progress, and I notice it's not in there, and that's why I always go in there to look for it, see if maybe it's changed or something, so that'd be nice to see there. And the other thing is the mow, and I brought this up like the last meeting about that property right there prior in Houston, that property hadn't been mowed in like two years since I've lived there, and Sylvia said the last time, it's mowed right on the curb but not inside the property, and it just looks like really bad, and it's just bringing the looks of the city down. And that might be something we can do, is like charge the owners of that property and get it mowed out and get it cleaned up.
And just like you just said there with that property and any other property that anybody sees, we do offer a free app on our phones where you can report your concerns, send anything, pictures, wherever you want, any kind of description, to help us figure out where it's at. I mean, that's, shouldn't be nothing used for anybody to be heard, but it is out there, any kind of concern. That way, it gets directed to the right department head, and you should have a response to what you sent in, if it's been handled, or should be able to at least see it being taken care of. Just to remind y'all.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anybody else who would like to say anything? Before we continue on, I also would like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, because this may, may or may not be our last meeting before the year's out, but it's also a very privilege and an honor to be able to be up here with my fellow council members to help discuss our future growth here in Aransas Pass. You know, there's a lot of things that come and go, and there's a lot of rumors that are always spread, and I always tell people, you want to avoid the rumor, come to the meeting. Try and make it as easy as possible, it's online. If you don't want to do it today, get it at the house later, tomorrow, whatever, look at your convenience. But this is the best way to kill all rumors. Now, one rumor that hopefully will become fact, which you already see, is the growth of Aransas Pass. We're looking forward to seeing this community grow to be great, to which it should be. There's a lot of hope, a lot of promise, and a lot of hard work that's being done behind the scenes through everybody, police department, fire department, our public works. But this is the common goal of this council here, to make this place be somewhere respectable, with a great promise for our youth to grow. So, on that note, I'll close the Citizen Comments, and we'll continue on. This brings us to item number five. A recognition presentation by A, our Fire Department, and B, our Police Department. Ricky, Eric, the floor belongs to y'all.
Do you have them? You're going to present what to staff? I don't have your...
Well, I don't know what to say right now, but we had a case to give to the Police Department for all the assistance that they've given us for the past year on accidents and... Actually, last month, we had, we had the officers out there, out in full hose, the accident we had, we had the officers out there tweaking the room, helping patients. Actually, doing quite a bit to help us out through the year.
It's man love, guys, it's the end of the year. Come on, at least get a photo op.
What I can only say is, the work with the Police Department is one of the best I've ever had. This is a real relationship we've had with them, working side by side, and me, we're all one people.
Good deal.
Trying to smile, this great man, let's smile.
How about a big hug?
Yeah, yeah.
You want some candy?
It'll be on Facebook within three secs.
I appreciate that, Chief. That's what we're used to, having that little combo. There's always that joke going back, one of the firefighters, you know, slipped and put a little Aransas Pass Fire Department sticker on the back of my truck. My neighbors don't know who I am anymore, so... I had a couple of awards that I wanted to present tonight, Council, I appreciate you being able to do so. Back on October 19th, 2014, which was a Sunday, we had a murder victim, he was distressed, he was experiencing some type of a virus, he was infected, he's still in hospital today, but the response that he was given by a community resident, as well as an officer, contributor resident, saved his life. I actually have a video here of part of the incident, and I'd like to show you. We were, I asked for permission from the family, and they grant permission for this purpose.
Sure, is it life-saving?
Now, audio only comes out when I think it's safe.
Ah, I know, sir. Can you open the door? It's going to be two doors, Tom, George Mary, two doors, Tom, George Mary. 34, I think he had put that thing in space, maybe either had a strobe or our side.
I'm trying the doors, you don't want to have to get it, that's hard. We're working on that, he should have been able to break it off first of all. I was working on the last shot.
Sir, you all right, sir? Sir, you all right? Sir? 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 Can you set up for him, he's still breathing?
Now, the position he was in, he was looking, the way he was explaining to me, it was something like maybe positional obstruction or something, he was having a hard time of breathing, and it was important to get him out.
Sir, can you bring it again, there was a big favor?
There we have Fred Shaw, who's resident, he's in the audience today, too. And he was persistent with us. We actually experienced three or four emergencies all at the same time, right around the same time during that day. EMS was being taxed, and law enforcement was being taxed. So, the first officer that showed up had to depart for an emergency. The guy wasn't as bad at that time. Shaw stayed with us on it, and he ended up recalling to the location, and that's when Officer Piper showed up. If I didn't get woke, y'all could come up. I actually have, for law enforcement, it's known as the Life Saving Award, and I presented it to Kaiser here, and Mr. Shaw, I see him again, I appreciate you setting up also. And I got a letter, appreciation for your effort as well. Pictures here. Challenge point is something that we give out to citizens, they kind of go a little down for assisting law enforcement. Well, I didn't do all that much, honestly, just someone right here.
You help me out, give me a hand, anything. Go figure out that handy car.
He came out, and he got right at it, he got right after it, and I'm sure that man wouldn't be alive today if it wasn't for him, so he deserves all the credit for it. All I did was make a phone call and help out just a little bit, so. So, I mean, it's very important, we do appreciate it. Thank you very much. This is the award they give as well, who's wearing this one on his uniform? This is Terry Murray. I will tell you that the prognosis for the individual was, they say he had a 50% chance of it, and they don't know what's going on. And then, as a 10% agent, which is indicated, he just snapped out of it, and he's starting to make a full recovery, about 85%. He's, he doesn't like staying in the hospital, doesn't understand why he's got to stay there, so the family's very, very pleased, very pleased with the guy, you know?
Good deal. This will move on to item number six, considering that the moving to January 19th, 2015, City Council meeting to January 22nd, 2015.
Well, Mayor and Council, this is really to coincide with the grants. There's a harbor bulkhead project that's in process in order to bid and get, open the bids and award the contract. We would miss, and we'd have to call a special meeting, so as opposed to doing that, we thought we'd combine both those meetings in January. To the 22nd, yes, ma'am.
I want to make a motion that we move the meeting from January the 19th, 2015, to Monday, January the 26th, 2015.
22nd.
What did I say?
26th.
26th. To Monday, January the 26th?
22nd.
22nd.
It says right here on the 26th.
It has it on here, the 26th, so I...
This is the 22nd.
It should be January 26th, that's correct. That's the following Monday. The agenda memo is correct. The agenda itself is right.
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
January 26th, for the record.
This will bring us to item number seven. We will consider enacting, nominating eight board members to the 2015... Is it just 2015, 2015, or 2016?
2015, 2016.
Okay. TCAP Board of Directors.
Mayor and Council, this is, this is just a housekeeping item. We vote for folks for our electrical co-op, that's, that's all this is. We don't know any of the people on the ballot, so...
So, how do we know they're good?
We don't, sir. We're locked into that contract, if you recall, I tried to get aside of that about 18 months ago.
How do you want to do this, Sylvia, out loud, or...
If you guys tell me to vote for the top eight, I'm okay with that as well.
That's what I think, just make a motion for the top eight. Okay? That's what I make a motion for.
Is it from left to right or right to left?
Down. Going down.
Okay, we're taking word for it. Okay, we're all in agreement, then. Who second's up?
Second.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to item number eight, considering that on the inter-local agreement between the City of Aransas Pass and the Coastal Bend Council Government Solid Waste Grant, local enforcement and equipment purchase.
Mayor and Council, I'd really like to recognize, this is exactly the type of staff action that I would not only expect, but our community requires of us. Robert Brake, who was assigned to code enforcement, recently took it upon himself to apply for a grant through the Council of Governments, and the grant was awarded, and the grant is specifically for an ATV to help us in those, those sites that, you know, aren't reachable by vehicle, kind of thing. So, Robert, if you would please stand to be recognized? And Robert did this on his own, pursued the grants, wrote the grants, and got it awarded, so thank you very much, Robert.
Robert, good job, boss. This ATV will be four-wheel drive, right? All right, that's what I'm talking about.
Mayor, they've already got pictures of what they're going to have it rigged out as.
Oh, okay.
That's cool. So, do I hear a motion for approval for item number eight?
I want to make a motion that we approve the inter-local agreement between the City of Aransas Pass and the Coastal Bend Council of Government Solid Waste.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This brings us to item number nine, considering that on a Texas Community Development Block Grant. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund, and authorizing the mayor to act as the city's executive officer, and authorizing representative in all matters pertaining to the city's protections in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program.
Sylvia?
Mayor and Council, the item before you, we have Grant Works, a representative from Grant Works... from Grant Works here, if you need. It really is, again, in an effort to leverage our money, three hundred thousand is for water system improvements that we plan to use in areas of the city to, again, connect our water supply. The other one is a comprehensive planning grant. It is fifty-five thousand, and the city has cherry-picked and added more to that. We, we're in desperate need of some comp planning documents that we can't move fast enough on, so we're gonna have to bring in third-party help. And so, both of these grants would be applied through Grant Works, and it really is an attempt to tie it all together and leverage the current monies that we have in our budget.
Any questions of the council? Any members of the, of the audience have any comments or questions? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Grant Works is here, she's in the audience, if you.
I was gonna say, what are we looking at as far as the, the block grant program? What are we?
Typically, the CDBG grant program has an income requirement, and that's, that's one of the issues we're facing on ten sixty-nine. And we had that, we had the community meeting. There's typically a, a low demand income requirement. Our city's match is typically in monies on the taps, some of the labor, things like that. There is usually a match. We try to get as much in-kind as possible.
Okay.
Nobody else?
Are we finished?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm an appargainer with Grant Works. So, we did say in the resolution that is the next item, that there was going to be a sixty thousand dollar cash match. So, if we need to, you know, change that, we can talk about that now and add it to the minutes, and we can clear, clear that up if, if we need to. One project that we were thinking about was the, the application that we submitted the last time for y'all for Guile Avenue wasn't funded, so we were considering resubmitting that one, or any other water improvement project, because the resolution does specify water.
The Guile project is important for us to get water to our transfer station, collection, sorry, collection station. For the record, TCQ, it's a collection station.
Okay. Yes, sir.
As your commissioner in that end of the county, if you need any assistance with use of county roadway or county easements, it will help save you money.
Oh, we're coming for you, Jack.
Help bring that before Commissioner's coordination. Very sensitive to what Sylvia has brought to them so far. She's a bulldog.
Thank you for that.
What, Commissioner Cheney just meant to say, I did have meetings with all three commissioners' courts this week, and they went very well, regardless of the bulldog comment.
Then again, the hearing is closed.
This will bring us to item B. It'll be a resolution of the City Council of Ranspass, Texas authorizing the submission of the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund, for authorizing the mayor to act as the city executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Texas Community, excuse me, Development Block Grant of three, three hundred thousand dollars, water system improvements and upgrades. So, do I hear a motion for approval of this, or was it wish of the council?
Well, I make a motion that we approve Resolution B for the block grant and authorize the mayor as the executive officer.
I'll second it.
Hold on, Perry, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This will bring us to item C. Were we supposed to cover that sixty thousand on that one too, or not?
The, the first one has a sixty thousand match, and what's the, the match for the second? Thirty, thirty-five or something?
Twenty-one thousand, seventy.
But we added additional. The minimum grant match is twenty-one, seven hundred?
We got it within that eight different plans.
Oh, okay, great.
So, it was covered, okay. This will bring us to item C, a resolution of the City of Ranspass, Texas authorizing the filing of the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture, and authorizing the mayor to act as the city, city executive officer and authorized representative in the matters pertaining to the city participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program for fifty-five thousand dollars, comprehensive planning. What is the pleasure of the council on item C?
Well, I make a motion that we authorize the Texas Community Block Grant for fifty-five thousand dollars, and the mayor is the executive officer.
Second.
We have two seconds.
Go ahead and give it to him.
Ramiro, go now. Thank you, Vicki. So, hold on, Perry, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This brings to item ten, considering an act of awarding the bid of the City Ranspass fleet purchase. I know we got some questions on this.
Um, the part of bond sale was replacement of our city fleet. As you're aware, a lot of our fleet is really pieced together from remnants of the fleet graveyard that's at Public Works. We did have a auction recently to get rid of some of the older vehicles that were no longer running and in poor shape. We put a bid out. We had two local bidders, Aransas Autoplex and Allen Samuels. Both bids were competitive. In the end, at bid opening, we had Aransas Autoplex come as the higher bidder, and the bid was ultimately awarded to Allen Samuels for six hundred and seven thousand dollars for a total of twenty-two vehicles. They do come with a sixty-month maintenance plan and a hundred thousand mile protection plan.
Sylvia, how come we got four-wheel drives on everything?
Most of these are in our Public Works to go into those areas where soft sand, no actual streets.
Well, I mean, I don't object to some four-wheel drives, but that's like another eight to ten thousand dollars extra. I mean, that, that would've been one or two more vehicles.
We can take a look at that.
Well, I'm just, you know, in the future, let's, I mean, 'cause I, I, I definitely know they need some four-wheel drives, especially for the alleyways and right-of-ways and stuff.
Well, what council will approve will be the bid. If we go back and, and come in lower and be able to do that, that's, that's a bid modification we'd come back to.
I wrote that, and that, that was a general thing.
Well, I, it just could save us, I mean, I, I know they're in desperate need of it, you know, but if we can get twenty-two, and then we can go to twenty-three or twenty-four just by cutting a couple of the four-wheel drive packages off, you know, that could save us.
The other thing we're, we're looking at doing, because we, we are credit-worthy, again, is financing some of these for a period of time until debt pays off and then pay that off. So, we may never realize an actual payment within the time period, but no, certainly if it can, if it can garner us two extra vehicles.
Sure.
And everybody does know that just 'cause you got a four-wheel drive, it don't mean you don't share it to somebody else when it's needed, right?
Monday?
If you need a four-wheel drive vehicle, you don't have one, it's your team, you can't borrow somebody.
Yes, 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 sir.
Is there any other questions on this? So, what's the pleasure of the council for item ten?
Well, I make a motion that we award, you said Allen Samuels came back?
Allen Samuels.
Award Allen Samuels for the purchase of the fleet vehicles for six hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Is Allen Samuels in the previous act?
No, 'cause they say they're just.
That's just in the general package.
I second.
Hold on, Perry, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. How long before the vehicles?
Six to eight weeks.
Six to eight weeks, good deal. Now, it brings us to item eleven, considering an act on entering into agreement with Mr. Bazan for safety training for public work staff for the amount not to exceed ten grand.
Uh, Mayor and Council, this is a, this is an item that's, that's really long in coming, and, and I wish I could tell you that ten thousand dollars would be the only amount we were going to expend for Public, Public Works, but that's not true. These are twelve initial modules that are awareness-level training. I am officing out of Public Works two days a week, and I will tell you, we are in not only desperate need of these twelve, but some pretty specific training. We need CDL training, obviously, and Mr. Bazan is doing training right now for the City of McAllen, so he's been gracious to work us in two days. Now, his training is contingent upon some of our staff being able to take some tests later on in the week and next week, so we are cutting it very close, not, didn't plan it that way, that's just how the licenses and things fell.
Is there any questions from council on this? No? Thank you. It will be the pleasure of council on item number eleven.
Well, I make a motion that we enter into an agreement with Mr. Bazan for the safety training for public work staff for an amount not to exceed ten thousand.
Second the motion.
Hold on, Perry, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This will bring us to item number twelve, considering an act on the fire department items, which A would be a purchase of the Metro Fire Truck with series twenty-fifteen Bud, uh, bottom monies. B, the power compressor, compressor for self-contained breathing apparatus and scuba bottles. The, item C would be MS eight packs for base pieces and carbon cylinders.
Uh, well, Mayor and Council, this is an item that was approved in the last budget. The, the truck came in under the amount that we had proposed, so that allows us to replace some desperately needed items for Police Department. I think his budget will end up having to subsidize less, or, or match the difference less than five thousand dollars for everything that's needed on the truck.
Please, sir, fire.
Fire, sir.
Can we do all these three at once?
Yes.
It will be the pleasure of the council on items A, B, and C for item twelve.
I'll make a motion we approve items A, B, and C on agenda item twelve.
Second the motion.
Hold on, Perry, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This brings us to item number thirteen, considering an act on the building department items, which would be A, B, C, D, E, and F. I guess we'll do these individually, starting with A. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. I declare a public hearing open on the request of Sam and Carol Lee and Sylvia Tang for a conditional use permit for a, to operate a storage processing and commercial salvage and reclamation operation, properties located at lot twelve, lot two thirty-one, presently zoned, general business. The Plan and Zoning Commission that they're meeting on this matter have recommended your approval. And I would note that all proper notices have been given. Is there someone here present, either Sam or Carol Lee and Sylvia Tang? Would you come forward, please, and? Your, your name?
Yeah, my name's Sam Lee.
Okay, and Mr. Lee, tell the council what it is you're, you're doing and what you, what you want.
I'm not, I don't know.
Okay, alright, good.
As you all know, they've got the business next to mind. They actually don't melt down aluminum and steel and all that stuff there. They buy aluminum, or steel, or stuff for people, and they actually haul it to Corpus, and dispose of it over there and get paid for it. What they've already done, as y'all can see, they cleaned that place up considerably. They're planning on putting a, I'll raise a few per minute.
Yes, there's a sign.
They're gonna put a six-foot or an eight-foot, and that's up to y'all, because at first it was, he asked to put an eight, and y'all said, no, put a six, and then Planning Zoning wanted an eight, but they never did say six or an eight.
Okay.
They're actually gonna put a six-foot, if not an eight, whatever y'all decide, all the way around this, this is actually a main building here. He's gonna make it where there, you know, it's all privacy fence, all the way around. This right here will be a counterbeaver gate that actually opens for his traffic to come in through Wheeler, through his building, sell whatever they're gonna sell, go out and come out the left street around that. They are already starting to do some landscaping in there, and the main objective is, the planning is only was talked about, you know, big weight foot, you're still gonna be able to see that eight in there. My problem with it all, which I have a problem with it too in my business, they're gonna tag that place. We put a big weight foot fence up there, here come the tag. They're gonna start riding there, they're gonna start riding there. I'll go shout a couple guys, I caught them doing it, thank God they don't mess with me when they attack on stuff like here. But I see it as being a big billboard to tag stuff, so we need to, I keep it down that side. Leaving a six-foot and a little ice up there, and I'm gonna throw off some crazy fence of ice stuff, and he's gonna do it professionally.
Okay.
Very nice neighbors to me, they help me, I help them, they're English and stuff, they real good, but they're probably the nicest people that I'll ever meet. I'd love to see them stay where they're at. I've had some real jerks over there, and they'll see what it looked like before they even been there. I think everybody was under the impression, like I said, that they're actually melting down the stuff and carrying old trucks and stuff like that, partying all day, keep it pointing. Everything comes in and out of there every week, all the Corpus gets it out of there. Like I said, I, I hope y'all approve it.
I have noticed improvements, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I've been helping them, and I've got one, there's one boat over there that I got left at my shop, I'm gonna get it out there this week. Any one of y'all want a free boat? Jesus couldn't make it run, so the motor don't get on it. That's the last thing we got left back there when we started. And I know I got it, but the zoning deal, y'all, my fence will be started tomorrow, they're gonna start marketing it up. I just wish y'all would send some over, I think I got both, 'cause that's actually poison, not poison oak, it's called poison something or another. One of my boys got it with it, he's almost in the hospital over there. Poison.
Poison ice?
It ain't poison ice, it's poison sumac. There you go. He's four up, I mean, from top to bottom, and that's all that's over there. So, I put my fence inside of my chain link fence, I'm not going over there. That stuff, that, that is a whole lot of space everywhere. But that's another thing. Y'all know my life, I'm really appreciative, very good neighbor, my wife, lives in Bay Harbor, she's here to stay.
Members of the council have any questions or comments?
Vicki? No one?
Is there anyone in the audience who is opposed to the application? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris, and thank y'all for coming.
I would, I would point out to council that, that the Planning Zoning Commission has, has recommended a twelve-month conditional use permit, and I would recommend your approval of that, but you still need to make a decision on what height fence you want, so.
Six foot? Six foot, yeah. A six will be fine. Alright.
Is it gonna be, do we specify material, or is it just a chain link fence, or?
It's a wood, it's a wood screening.
Okay.
Wooden fence, right? Yeah. So, what'll be the council's pleasure on item B?
I make a motion we approve item B with six-foot fence and twelve-month conditional use permit.
Second the motion.
Hold on, Perry, say aye.
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 Yes, six foot. Thank you, Chris.
We'll follow up with the letter to them. First, we'll follow up with the letter on timeframe for construction of the fence.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, sir. Item C is a public hearing, which I declare open on the request of Billy and Brandy Chambers, two rezones from R seven D, single-family dwelling to manufactured home district, properties located fifteen fifteen West Moore Avenue. Again, Planning and Zoning at their last meeting have recommended your denial of this request. Is either Billy or Brandy Chambers present? Yes, ma'am, you wanna come forward, please?
Do you need to come over?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we purchased some property in October of last year. We've been in Aransas County for years, we're very familiar with it, purchased the property to make this home. Once again, there were two mobile homes on the property. One was totally trash, we gave it away, it's been moved off. The zoning committee meeting last Monday, we found out that we were no longer allowed to have mobile homes. I have an RV that's parked there that's being stored, and I'm a landman, I'm in the oil business, I'm not home all the time, and my parents are in the movie business around Texas, so they're not home all the time. I stay in my travel trailer, would like to stay in my travel trailer when I come home. This is the reason we purchased the property. We're now, we were cited and told that we could not do that, it could only be stored. We're looking for one RV to be approved. If it's called an RV park, it's an RV park. I don't, I don't understand, we don't have any city utilities. The road is, is the county line between, you know, us being in city and across the street is county. There's several people, I guess, that have had. There's several people, I guess, that have had the same thing. Cleaned up, our property is nice, it's, it's up kept. Some other peoples, I guess, are not. I, I'm totally with the cleaning up of Aransas Pass, I think it's needed to happen for a long time, I think it's, we've taken some great steps. I still think there's a lot to be done. All we're asking for, like I said, is the use, temporary use until a permanent structure can be built of, I guess, what y'all are wanting to be an RV park or a mobile home park. We're good with any of it.
So are you looking to build an RV park or your own home?
It's, sir, it's nonprofit, it's just my camper, my parents live in the mobile home that's still on the property. That's all we're looking for. If y'all want to consider one RV and RV park, I guess that's what we're looking for.
Well, but I understand that you just said you're only, you're only looking for a mobile home to be there temporarily until you construct a permanent residence?
The, the travel trailer, yes, sir, until something that can be constructed permanently.
Well, but your application is for a manufactured home park.
That's what we were told that we needed to apply for.
Can this be corrected, huh?
Well, no, the discussion, the discussion of a permanent structure has not been the discussion. The discussion has been, we've had an RV, we've had a trailer, we want to leave it there, we don't know why it's there, we don't know why we have to rezone it. If, if there is indeed a permanent structure to be built, there's a method that the RV can only stay there for a year, but before we issue that permit, we've got to have house plans approved, you've got to have your financing in order, all of those things. The discussion at planning and zoning was, it was not a hardship for you to move it to an RV park. Therein lies the issue, we've set precedent at planning commission and here at council on not allowing RVs. One of our code changes this year was not to allow those kinds of structures in residential districts because it does bring down the value, especially in areas that are undeveloped like that. It is a way to begin undocumented, unregulated development in an area. Very little city utilities to have RVs popping up, it's just not a good precedent to set.
Well, my suggestion to you is that if you just want a mobile home there on a temporary basis, at this point, you're in violation of the zoning laws, you need to move what's present out there.
It's just being stored there now, I mean, it's not, it's not being, it's not connected and we were told that we could store it there as long as it wasn't connected.
Well, but I would recommend to the council that they go along with the recommendation of the planning zoning commission and deny her current request. But if you come up with some plans with some time periods to build a home there. You can always come back to council and ask for a conditional use permit for generally twelve months to reside there while the construction is going on.
Sure, and that's fine, we just weren't turned, told this last week at the zoning committee or, you know, by the zoning council. I mean, I've been back and forth with Doc and you, we've discussed this, and I've just been going by what we've been told.
Okay.
So, and we didn't even realize there was a temporary permit to get this done. I, we didn't know this and we weren't, you know, explaining this last Monday either.
Well, but at this point, you don't have any plans or anything else for construction of a permanent home?
Not, not, not right at this moment.
Yeah.
We've just lived there a year, we're still redoing the, the mobile home that my, my parents live in.
Okay.
So.
Any questions or comments by the council?
And the mobile home is in your, in the, in this property here also?
I'm sorry?
And the mobile home is in this property?
Yes.
Okay.
There were two mobile homes on the property when it was purchased, along with RV hookups. And our real estate agent knew what we were doing and this is what we've come down to.
So pause back on the real estate agents again, basically. It's not your fault, ma'am, you just come in the middle of it.
Yes, I, I mean, I totally understand this, but I also think the zoning laws that changed where there's now no mobile homes to be allowed in there, I think that we should have been notified of that as well. Not to mention, there's other things there, the, the other mobile home that was there, it was zone business. Nobody can still explain to me why it was zone business. You know, we have two separate addresses, my parents have fifteen fifteen, my address is fifteen seventeen, all this was done before we purchased the property.
Is there anyone in the audience who has any comments? Anything further from the council?
Okay, my question to you is that she has a place where your parents live?
Yes.
Are we considering that also or just the?
Just the RV is all we're looking for.
Just the RV, are we gonna allow that mobile home to be there?
Yeah.
My understanding it was grandfather.
It's grand, okay. Sorry, blame me talking.
All right, if there's nothing else, I declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you, ma'am.
So on item D, will be the pleasure of the council on this. Continue with the recommendation from our, from our board.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the recommendation of planning and zoning commission and deny the request.
Second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 This will bring us to item B, amend in five point two one, the Ranspass Municipal Code by adding K, termite inspection required.
Mayor and council, this was actually an item brought to me by members of the community and a member of the council. We, we have a termite problem in our area and right now, the only termite treatment that's required is at the commercial stage, not for residential. And so the amendment would require termite testing at framing or rough inspection for residential structures.
Will be the pleasure of the council.
Make a motion, we amend the Ranspass Municipal Code by adding K, termite inspection.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 This brings to item F. What's that, Vicki?
I was just myself, new, I was just looking under the new, not any current.
Okay. This brings to item F, amend in five point two, point one of the Ranspass Municipal Code by adding the fees for inspection services in the extratutorial jurisdiction, ETJ.
Well, this is, this is really in an attempt to be a peace offering with some of our neighboring counties. Our charter does give us authority in our one-mile ETJ, that has not been the practice, we've been through this before. Recently, I had a case where a resident comes in, lives literally across the street from the county line, was assessed their fee at the county and then was surprised at the fee with the city. And I'll remind the council and the community, the county is only reviewing floodplain, which is a federal requirement, and windstorm, which is a state requirement. What the city's looking at are actual construction codes, so that when those areas are brought into the city limits, things are to standard and, you know, pass a litmus test and we're not grandfathering or having to grandfather problems into our city limits. The, the resident had an issue with the fee, felt like he, you know, shouldn't have to pay an exorbitant fee. And as a peace offering, which I think, you know, we can work through, normally, when you have to travel further outside your city limits, you raise your fee to account for travel and things. But I think we have so many areas of growth that haven't been annexed and we haven't touched, that in this particular case, it's, it's okay to reduce the fee to $350 versus the current $1,100. That at least gets our residents to understand there's a permit and understand we are providing inspection services for that permit. And it really is in their best interest to let us go and inspect. This is a, oftentimes, a thirty-year investment of a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Hey, Sylvia, did you determine how many inspections this would be?
Michael's lumping all the inspections right now in two or three, all of the rough finals and the certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Just for the rest, benefit of the rest of the council, we've bounced this back and forth on, on how many visits it would take. And if you don't understand construction, the plumber and the electrician and the building framer are never the best of friends, they always get in each other's way and always mess up each other's work. So in, in an attempt to not get the inspectors or the building people to keep going back and forth, Michael has lumped the inspections. And so we're out there a minimal amount of times, but it, you know, at the end, we're making sure everything matches.
Do we have approval for item F? There's no more questions?
I have a question. What do our, our residents, if they're doing inspections in town, what's?
If it's new construction in town, it, it's based on house valuation and it's a master permit, it's about $1,100.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion for approval for item F?
I make a motion, we approve item thirteen F.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who did the second, I'm sorry?
Rand.
Is there a review, item number fourteen?
Well, no, we have, Sylvia.
Yeah, we did the review, so.
We did the year-end review, I just need to let the council know that I am submitting you for city council of the year to TML. We will be submitting those nominations prior to the end of the year and I, I will need the mayor's signature in order to do that. But I think you guys have done an excellent, excellent job. It was a steep learning curve when I came up. You know, I, I know several of you can now cite the planning ordinance and can at least go points, especially on the map. And when we talk water and sewer, we're not, we're not speaking Greek, so for that, I am personally nominating you for city council of the year.
Thank you.
I would like to add to that, of course, all y'all probably do know or don't know, I still find out people don't know who I am. But this is my first term actually running for mayor, much less any kind of seat in the public other than the little league board. But it's been a great opportunity and I have enjoyed it. I could tell everybody, y'all finding out, I like to make myself available at any time. You see me, stop me, talk to me, you know, I work for the citizens of Ranspasses, that's the whole council does, you know. So the door is always open, don't get scared off when you see me on the bike, you know.
You are quite imposing on the bike, I'll just say that.
But it's been a pleasure, though. I want to continue to see the grow. Yes.
I'd like to make a statement, is there a municipal counties in the state of Texas that have over 1,100 cities, the Dorian, or the size of the Ranspass and maybe smaller? Being named city council of the year by TMA and by TML is about a high honor if you can possibly receive one, sir. All right? Well, he is actually right.
Good deal. I appreciate everybody's time this evening. Right now, we're hitting.
We've got a, just, Donna's gonna do a quick financial report. And you had Eric's police department update last.
Yes.
No? No?
Hi, John, I'm Donna Cox, I'm the finance director. I'm coming to you with the end of November's financial statement. It's obviously unaudited. There's nothing really spectacular going on, our income is pretty low right now. We'll start getting our tax money rolling in towards this month and the beginning of next month, and that'll brighten things up for us, so right now, we're kind of in a little cash flow slump. Expenses are right in line where they're supposed to see, be, you'll see those on your financial statements. You'll notice that the taxation department is at 27%. We pay those out in quarterly increments to our, our different counties that do our appraisals for us. So that's typically in line with what we expect that to be, since we've paid one quarter of that. The only thing really of note is you'll see the sanitation fund at the bottom is gonna look a little leaner than it has in the past. Sylvia and I discussed rolling the citizens collection commit, collection station in with the sanitation fund. It's all garbage, it didn't make sense to have them as two separate funds, so it's only one. Obviously, the aquatic center is losing money since they're not open right now. They have a little bit of residual revenue coming in at the beginning of October as we closed everything out for them and then we did a refund for them in November, their party that didn't happen. The harbor expenses look a little higher than normal, but that's because we had a lot of work done on the bulkhead and that'll come back out as we transfer over the bond to cover those expenses. So that's why that looks a little higher than normal for the moment, but that'll even back out. Are there any questions about financial statement?
I just want to say thank you, Donna, for all the hard work you've been doing for us and your transition from being our judge to our main financial person has been wonderful, I thank you.
It was, it was quite a ride, you're a pleasure, Mark. Thank you.
How's the graph doing, Donna? How's the water graph?
The water graph, oh, that's the project for tomorrow.
She's got until Friday, she's got until Friday.
I have DVD tomorrow night, so I got their financial statements finished, and that's the next project.
Good deal. Thank you, Donna.
Donna, Donna loves to tell the story, I recruited her and just. I told her she'd love the job once she did it.
So we should be good, right, Sylvia?
Yes.
All right, again, this will bring us to item number fifteen. For all that do come back, appreciate your time this evening, the ones that don't, I hope you have a good evening, have a good morning. Right now, we're gonna go to recess, to open meeting, and retire to the second session on pursuant chapter five five one, our Texas Government Code, which would be item A. Five five one point oh seventy-four deliberations regarding our city personnel with the city manager, Sylvia Carrio, her contract. Item B, five five one point oh seventy-two deliberations regarding real estate property on Combron Harbor with Mr. Hal Jones. Item C would be section five five one point oh seventy-two deliberations of real estate property with Combron Harbor, Well Rock, LTD. Thank y'all for this evening, it's right now eight fifteen. Amanda, I need my envelope.